First, I want to remind everybody that this is being livestreamed on our YouTube channel, and I'd like to acknowledge Ms. Nita Pratt and Erica Kankiewicz for taking care of our minutes and our technical needs. Nancy is running late, she'll join us when she can. First order of business is to approve the regular meeting minutes of May 14th. Can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion for the approval of the regular meeting minutes dated May 14th, 2025.
Aye, second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Next is highlight on schools, volunteer and retiree recognitions.
Good evening, everyone. Our annual volunteer of the ward, this year, Amalia Anan has been selected. Mrs. Hewitt from the drama department has written or wrote that Amalia Anan is a constant support in the WB Drama Department. While her three youngest students, excuse me, while her three youngest are all active on both stage and behind the scenes, she's always steps up to lend her own helping hand. For the past few years, she's always been one of the first to offer backstage help when I ask and never hesitates to be there, even if it means missing one of her own onstage. In addition, she has been lending her talents as a photographer free of charge in capturing show photos for the middle school musicals in our fall and spring productions. She is someone I know will always reach out to offer us services even before I might have time to ask for help, and knowing that she is someone I can rely on is just one part of what makes the WB Drama Program so strong and will continue to grow in the future. Congratulations.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, David. Want to say anything about?
It has been a total pleasure to be there to help, and it is a privilege. And you get a chance to get to know the students in a way that you would not have otherwise, so their little hearts light up and you can just see it in their faces when you're around. You get a little bit window into what makes them happy and what makes them sad. It's always been a pleasure. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And I believe our next recipient is one of our retirees this year. I believe she belongs in the classification of someone who can go by one name, that would be Crystal.
Crystal, on behalf of Major Edward School in the West Boylston School District, we want to congratulate you on your retirement and recognize you for your wonderful 16 years you have dedicated to the Major Edward Schools. We appreciate your commitment to the students, families, faculty, and volunteers that you have helped to feel welcomed and cared for over the years. We certainly miss your incredible work ethic, attention to detail, sense of humor that you brought to the job every single day. You always wanted to help out in any way that you could, Memorial Day presentations for veterans, tours for new students, or even in the last few weeks, training our new secretary for the future. And you consistently put in a tremendous amount of time and effort into anything and everything that you did at the school, and we certainly will miss you, and we wish you the best, and can't wait to hear what you and your husband Howie do in your next chapter. Congratulations on your retirement.
Am I supposed to say something?
Yes.
I just want to say that Alex really didn't like me on Mondays, but that's okay. I just want to say thank you to the students and all the amazing parents that I've met. And Alex and Michelle, you guys have been wonderful, and thank you. And Brenda, and everybody, thank you. Thank you for letting me be part of your district. Thank you.
And our other retiree who's here tonight is Mr. Ed Riggles. I can vividly recall my first encounter with Mr. Riggles 12 years ago, early July, up in the fifth grade hallway when he was waxing the floors when it was about 120 degrees, and I could see him sizing me up with that little look in his eye, which I couldn't tell if he was thinking I was gonna be trouble, or I knew he was gonna be trouble. I think we know how that was. I think he also said, "We've been through two principals in the last four years, let's see how long you stick around for." Something along those lines. So congratulations, Ed.
He's stuck around for a while.
Thirty-seven to thirty-eight years?
Almost thirty-nine.
Thirty, almost thirty-nine years. Obviously, the students and staff at Edwards will miss his steady presence, his sense of humor, his sometimes grumpy disposition, and I know I will miss our recollections of the good old days, which was the 1980s. Congratulations, Ed.
True. Well, thanks. Thanks. I mean, it's been a ride, that's for sure, you know? So move on to next stuff, and hope you all have good times after we're all gone here. So, good luck to you all.
You too, as well. So. We had two other retirees also. Darrell Hebert from our cafeteria retired after eight years. I paid a visit to her yesterday at Hillside Village where she resides. We had a nice conversation. I delivered the plaque there. And Rick Watson is also retiring after 22 years here. Erlin and I had a wonderful ceremony with Rick out in the hallway about an hour ago. So congratulations to both of them. Thank you.
Mr. Marha, I think your math was off a little bit. There's one more retiree that I think we should acknowledge. Everybody, Superintendent Marha, this is his last school committee meeting. He will be retiring June 30th. It has been a tremendous pleasure working with you for, I think, your entire tenure here. I didn't realize until Mr. Fornia pointed it out at graduation that this current graduating class were started in kindergarten, your first year at Major Edwards. I think it's fantastic that you were able to see that entire class through, and you will truly be missed.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. And the school committee has a little something for you.
Oh, okay. No. Thank you very much. Thank you. It's been a pleasure and a privilege to be here for the last 12 years and to work with the committee and the families and students of West Boylston. I came here, I remember, 12 years ago, right around this time, for an interview where it seemed like half of the Edwards staff and Dr. Shopper in the library at Edwards, and my parents had moved to town in 2006, and I thought, you know, spending so much time in the town at that point, it must be nice to be in such a small district and such an idyllic location, and I ended up, you know, 12 years ago, getting the position. So it's been a pleasure of my life being here, and I wish everyone the best. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. This brings us to the community input section. Based on the volume tonight, we're gonna limit it to 15 minutes, and per our policy, each person can have up to two minutes to speak, and time cannot be granted to others. If you would please state your name and address when you come to the microphone.
Dear Principal Fornia, Superintendent Marha, Athletic Director Amy Smith, and School Committee members, first and foremost, I'd like to say, let's hear it for our 2025 softball They played their hearts out Sunday against a D1 committed pitcher and gave Greenfield a true athletic contest in the round of Elite Eight. Thank you to the Principal Fornia and Athletic Director Amy Smith for making the drive out to see them on Sunday. We, as varsity players and parents, past and present, and alumni, are here to express our deepest gratitude and utmost respect for our coach, John Pire. Recently, he has been wrongfully targeted and slandered by a town official, the details of which we would be willing to share in a private session. Tonight, we just wish to have you listen to all our positive impacts that this once coach has had on his players over the years. Please listen to the testimonies that people in this equa, to the most important people in this equation, the athletes, the students who you all work for, and their voices are powerful, their voices are many, and their voices should matter the most. And because I can't get up again, I want you to thank you in advance for listening. We just want three things from this meeting, and they're very simple. Most importantly, we just feel that Coach Pire is the best person for the job and should be hired for the 2025-2026 season. I know that you don't have that responsibility, but he has our full support, and we hope that he would have yours as well. Secondly, we feel that an apology should be sent to Coach Pire for behavior unbecoming of an elected town official. And lastly, we just hope that there's a common understanding that no member of this committee or any parent should ever enter the workplace of a school employee to threaten or have them fired, to threaten to have them fired or intimidate them in any way. Ladies, if anyone would like to speak, it is your turn.
My name is Megan Flaherty, and I am a junior here at West Boylston. Coach Pire has poured his heart and soul into making our softball team as successful as possible and has helped every one of us become better players and better people. Last year, when I tore my ACL, I wasn't able to play softball, but I was still a part of the team, all thanks to Coach Pire. He was nice enough to let me sit on the bench the entire season, knowing that I wasn't going to be able to play at all, just to be a part of the team and to cheer them on. Not every coach would do that. He showed that he cared about me both as a player and a person. I truly can't thank him enough for that. Not being able to play was already hard enough, but not being with the team would have been unbearable to watch. Coach Pire wanted to see me back out on the field playing just as much as I did. As I got back to playing this year, he has continued to encourage me to work harder and become a better player every single day. That was just my story. Coach Pire continues to support our entire team. In the offseason, he shows up for all of the other sports games, including soccer and basketball, just to support us girls. And for the girls who play travel softball as well, he has shown up to our tournaments in the summer to watch us play. He continues to invest in new tees and nets for practice, all for the betterment and success of the team. He even invested in a GoPro to be able to film our games and swings so that we can watch them to see how we can improve. He shows up early and stays late for every game and practice to get the field ready, and when I ask him to stay later with me to practice more, he always says yes because that's the kind of person he is. His dedication to our team is unmatched. Him and Coach Grange have spent countless amounts of hours talking to each other after games and practices. They remember every detail from games and continue to help us achieve our goals. And when we achieve our goals, he surprises us with chocolate-covered strawberries at practice the next day to celebrate our hard work. With all that being said, I'm forever grateful to have Coach Pire as our coach. We have been able to achieve so much, especially this year with such a young team. We were able to make it to the Elite Eight and played a hard-fought game that truly could have gone either way. Nobody is perfect, and everyone makes mistakes. I know for sure, though, that not having Coach Pire as our softball coach would be a horrible mistake, and it would be extremely detrimental to the future of West Boylston Varsity Softball. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Zoe Chilla, and I'm a junior here at West Boylston. I've been a member of the varsity softball team for five years. From being a swing player in seventh grade to stepping up and earning myself a full-time spot on the team at the end of eighth grade, Coach Pire has been there for me every step of the way. These past two seasons, I've had the wonderful opportunity to be a captain of our team. This position did not happen overnight. It took years of extra reps, stepping up for my team, and sportsmanship, all things that were possible because of Coach Pire's leadership. He creates an environment that gets girls excited to play softball, excited to learn more, and excited to become better. Let's take myself out of this for a second and look at Coach Pire's successes as a whole. He and Coach Granger recently recorded their 100th win in just six years against Franklin County Tech last Wednesday. Now, he didn't make a fuss or even tell any of us about this milestone because he wanted us to focus strictly on the game. This kind of selflessness is hard to find. A testament to his incredible coaching comes from the Franklin County Tech coach, Coach Joe Gamache. In the Athol Daily News, he noted, "We got off to not the best start, and this is not the team to do it against. They're young, but well-coached, fundamentally sound, did a lot of really good things, and their pitcher was solid. They're gonna be really good for a while. If other coaches can see how dedicated Coach Pire is just by one game, why can't all of you?" I would like to show my gratitude and appreciation for everything my coaches have done for me these past years, whether it be chocolate-covered strawberries after we complete our goals, pizza at the end of a long practice, a brand-new batting tunnel that took hours and hours to assemble, or the GoPro he went out of his way to buy for us. The commitment to our team is unmatched. Coach will show up hours before the game starts to make sure the field is in perfect condition for us to play on, and then stay hours after the game discussing what to improve on with Coach Granger. I guarantee that you will not find another coach like this. Coach Pire is devoted, helpful, and understanding, but one thing he is not is unfair. Players, parents, and fans can disagree with the lineup, but nonetheless, it is his and the other coaches' discretion to put out the best nine girls that put the team in the position to win. There are certain expectations of student athletes, and a coach that holds their players accountable is a coach that is doing their job. I'm urging you to think about the bigger picture, the future of the softball program as a whole. You are not just losing one coach, you would be losing the entire phenomenal coaching staff and dedicated players who will not play next season unless he's their coach. Thank you for your time, and I hope you will take my thoughts into consideration.
For those who don't know me, my name is Kira Ashi. I've played on the West Boylston Varsity Softball Team for three years. Throughout the years I've played, I've had nothing but great memories, mentors, support, and success. A huge part of that is because of our coach. He's done so much more than just coach us on the field, he's gone out of his way time after time to make us feel valued, supported, and respected. He's made chocolate-covered strawberries for the whole team after big milestones and orders us pizza after long practices. Point being, he spends his own time and money just to show us he cares. That's not in the job description, that's just the kind of coach he is. Even after long practices, he stays late with Coach Grange to clean up, to plan, and to prepare. He puts in hours that most people never see because he wants us to succeed. And on top of all of that, he's a winning coach. He and Coach Granger have led our team to over 100 wins in just six seasons. That doesn't happen by accident, that is the result of leadership, hard work, and dedication. They've built a program that's respected, competitive, and feared by other teams and coaches. In a nutshell, I'm asking you, please, to think about what this means to us as players, as a team, and as young girls who look up to him. He's made a lasting impact on all of us, and we are asking you to let him keep doing what he does best, leading, caring, and coaching with the passion and dedication he has. He has made us better players, but most importantly, he's made us better people. And I hope you'll continue to, and I hope you continue to let him do that for us and for the teams to come. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Adele, and I am reaching out to express my strong desire for Coach Pire to continue as our softball coach. He is truly exceptional. His focus goes beyond improving our skills. He teaches us the importance of teamwork and perseverance, lessons that are vital both in softball and in life. He consistently encourages us to give our best and has faith in our abilities, even when we struggle to believe in ourselves. Since Coach Pire joined us, our team has made remarkable progress. He creates an enjoyable practice environment while ensuring we learn and grow. He genuinely cares about each of us, not only as athletes but as individuals. He's always available to listen and provide guidance, whether it's related to softball or personal matters. I honestly can't imagine our team without him. Personally, as someone who just joined the team this year as an eighth grader, I have noticed significant improvement in my softball skills under Coach Pire's guidance. My previous experiences with the club voodoo coaches lacked the personal connection and individualized skill development that Coach Pire emphasizes. Being a part of his team has genuinely enhanced my growth both as a player and as a person. Therefore, I kindly urge you to ensure that Coach Pire remains with us. He is an incredible coach and an outstanding person. Losing him would be a tremendous loss for our team and our school. He makes softball an experience we all eagerly anticipate, and we truly want him to continue coaching us. Thank you for considering my thoughts.
My name is Eva LaPointe. I'm in the eighth grade, and this is my second year playing softball with Coach Pire. Last year, I played for him for only a short period of time as I was called up towards the end of the year, but from the moment I walked into the dugout, I knew that this was the kind of team I wanted to be on. Playing a full year with Coach Pire has been such an amazing experience. Not only has he trained me and the rest of my team as ballplayers, but has also pushed us to be the best we can be mentally. Coach has taken a varsity team, half of us being middle schoolers and most of us never playing together, to the Elite Eight, almost beating the number-two seed in the league. Each one of us has changed and grown throughout this season, thanks to Coach. From our seniors to our eighth graders and to our sixth graders, Coach makes it a point to spend time with each of us. He has not only taught me how to play a whole new position this year, but him and Coach Grange also deconstructed my entire swing and then put it back together with great results. He cares so much about this team that his wife knit us hats when it was cold outside. He has amazing knowledge for the game, and his dedication to the team is the best I've ever seen. In fact, almost every day after practice, my teammates and I have seen him and Coach Grange talking softball in the parking lot hours after we had all left. Coach is the kind of person that loves to celebrate your accomplishments, turn your mistakes into learning experiences, and make our season fun no matter how much we win or lose. Thanks to Coach, this team has been so special for me, and no coach could have brought this team as far as it went like Coach Pire did. Thank you so much, Coach. You have no idea what this year of softball has meant for me. I know that the skills that he has taught me will continue to grow the more I spend time on his team. I can't wait to spend another season with him.
My name is Sophie Chilla, and we are here today to talk about Coach Pire and the possibility of him being fired from his position. I went from being a swing player on JV and Varsity in my seventh grade year to now being fully on Varsity in my eighth grade year. Even in sixth grade, when I was on JV, Coach Pire would constantly assist the girls who needed the help, and he was with them every step of the way. Coach Pire still consistently and constantly helps me out with anything I need and is always open to answer questions. I, like many of you, are here to advocate for him to stay as a varsity softball coach. What truly matters is Coach's dedication to softball. You can see it in every practice, every game, and every pep talk. He doesn't just teach us how to swing a bat or field a ground ball, he teaches us strategies and to love the game. Beyond the field, Coach Pire is teaching us lessons, life lessons. He emphasizes teamwork, discipline, and perseverance through every practice. Coach Pire is a strong believer in fairness. He is not one to pull strings for anyone, giving each player equal opportunities to improve and contribute in different ways. This may be trying a little harder in practice or having a good game. He never resorts to negativity, always providing constructive feedback and encouragement, fostering a positive and supportive team environment. When there are mess-ups in our team and breakthroughs for the other, he doesn't use it as an excuse to get mad at us. He uses it as a teaching moment so we can grow and get better from our mistakes. He pushes us constantly to be better students, better teammates, and better people overall. Firing him would not only hurt our team but also take away a mentor who genuinely cares about our futures. Look at our team, we are living proof of Coach Pire's impact. We've grown so much from the beginning of the season, not just as players but as individuals, because of his guidance. That's a mark of a truly great coach, and that is just a few reasons on why he deserves to stay. Thank you.
Before you go, I just want to let you know that it's been 14 minutes, so this will be the last person.
Okay. Good evening. My name's Maria Dre, I'm a parent of one of the kids on the team. I think we are also a school choice family, a first-year school choice family. Our daughter is an athlete, a young athlete, and made the varsity squad as a 12-year-old, which is pretty unheard of and exceptional. I'm not gonna, I'm gonna, in the interest of time, just skip to a couple things here. Sports was something that we researched when we were making our choice to come into this community. We had concerns about social structure, diversity, whether or not there'd be cliques, things like that. The one concerning piece of feedback that we heard while we were considering West Boylston Schools was that sometimes small-time politics impact community decisions. We didn't think this was gonna affect us because we don't live in town, and it wouldn't impact our kids. Unfortunately, at a game on Friday, May 23rd, I witnessed initially what I thought was an emotional parent. I witnessed an emotional parent moment, what I thought initially. As it turned out, this is a publicly-elected official. In the middle of the game, I personally heard and witnessed that official walk over to the dugout and make the following loud, angry statements directly to Coach Pire mid-game. "Your days are numbered, you're finished in this town." They also stated, "I can shut this game down right now." This official did this publicly in full view of the players and families who had to witness this assault on their coach mid-game. To his credit, Coach Pire and his coaching staff continued to focus girls during the game, and then in the weeks that followed, to continue to compete and advance at a high level into the state tournament. Post-game and in the weeks that followed, I believe we thought everyone had moved on, and the incident we witnessed had been an emotional response on an emotional day. We later heard this wasn't the case, and that that official was actively worked and used their influence to ensure Coach Pire would be fired once the season ended. As a very passionate sport parent myself, I am prone to give that official some grace for the emotion displayed. However, actively pursuing termination for Coach Pire would represent an egregious violation of West Boylston School policy, which clearly establishes the standard that committee membership is conducted as a means of unselfish service, with no intent to play politics in any sense of the word, or to benefit personally from his or her committee activities. And committee members recognize that their authority is derived from the state and local electorate, and that such authority rests with the operation of the committee as a whole in its formal meetings, not with individual members who have no legal authority outside the meetings of the committee. To leverage and manipulate a public position for a personal agenda, such as getting a coach fired because you don't agree with their in-game decisions, is not a decision that is based on principle with the greater good intended. Instead, it has all appearances of a personal agenda. So as a family who chose this school district for our children, I am disappointed to have to stand here tonight and advocate on behalf of Coach Pire and his coaching staff. Athletic competition is not for everyone. Success in sports and competition are determined by effort, skill, attitude, and personal accountability. Good coaches create culture around these values. I think what these girls have said tonight proves that he is doing that. Our experience this year as a first-year family and the progression and improvement of our child as an athlete has been reflective of such a culture under Coach Pire and his staff. Respectfully, he should not be fired on the basis of complaint and public threat levied by a parent with a sense of entitlement and authority due to a publicly-elected position. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, community input is closed. We have warrants to approve. Can I get a motion to approve the payables warrant for May 20th and June 3rd?
I make a motion to approve the payable warrants of May 20th and June 3rd, 2025.
Can I get a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Can I get a motion for the payroll warrants for May 23rd and June 6th?
Make a motion to approve payroll warrants dated 5/23/25 and 6/6/25.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Next, we have an appointment of a representative to the Keystone Collaborative Board of Directors. I'm assuming that's gonna be Dan, right? So, with Dan as the incoming, can I get a motion to appoint Dan as the...
Yeah. Jason, you got it. I will make a motion for the appointment of Dr. Dan Riley to be the representative for the Keystone Collaborative Board of Directors for FY '26. There you go, Dan.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. All right. Communications and reports. Alex isn't here. Why don't we skip Alex? We'll go to Mr. Fornia for now.
Thank you, Mr. Fornia. The staff of the Middle High School were very proud to support the 52 graduates from the class of 2025 at the graduation exercises held here at the Middle High School on May 30th. This year's graduates have committed to many impressive colleges and universities while leaving many positive memories of their impact on the West Boston Middle High School as part of their legacy. Thanks to the many teachers, parents, coaches, and members of the community who have supported this year's graduates throughout their time here at West Boston Middle High School. The students in grades 8 through 12 are completing their final exams this week. Our grade nine students completed their physics MCAS testing last week, which marks the end of all of the standardized testing that our school has completed this year. This past week, we held our class elections and speeches for class officer positions. The school administration and guidance team continue to make progress on student schedules and hoping to get our students in grades 8 through 12 their schedules on the last day of school. High school students will receive a copy, as I mentioned, on the last day of school. and I will continue working on the schedules for incoming sixth graders, as well as the seventh and rising eighth graders, as we wrap up the month of June. We are excited to celebrate tomorrow our grade-eight students in their annual move-up-to-high-school ceremony, which will be here tomorrow morning in our auditorium. Families will be attending as we say goodbye to this rising freshman class who prepare to move on to high school in the fall. Finally, I'd like to thank the following people for extraordinary service to our school this year. These deserving and hard-working contributors to our school's success in academics, arts, and athletics include our athletic director, Amy Smith, our secretaries, Kim Malario and Marie Donson, for all their work on our graduation, on providing the scholarship work to our students, keeping our building calendar, and assisting students with all their daily needs. Thank you for being such a welcoming presence at our school. I'd like to thank our guidance team of Mrs. LaRoche and Mrs. Carlson for all their work with college admissions, with MCAS, and with AP testing. And finally, I'd like to thank Mr. Maher for keeping our school and our district moving forward, and I'd like to wish him the very best in the coming years, and congratulate him on his years of service to the town of West Boyleson. I've included a list of the colleges and universities for the class of twenty twenty-five that they have applied to and been accepted to, and a list of the graduates. Thank you all very much for a great year.
Thank you, Mr. Fornia. Any questions, Mr. Fornia? All right. Ms. Toddette, we'll go back to you, I skipped you when you were on.
Sorry, I missed that, the opening there. Good evening, everybody. This past month at Major Edwards has been a lot of fun. It's crazy how fast it's going right now, it's going very quickly as we approach the Friday last day. Our teachers have definitely been steady, trying to keep the students focused, engaged, whether it's instruction or activities, completing the end-of-the-year assessments, organizing our new materials for CKLA, they have all come in, and we're already ready to go for that first day, at least with the organization part, getting ready for the professional development, they'll be coming on that first day. Last week on Thursday and Friday, students participated in a specialist spree day, which involved some PE activities with Mr. Esposito, music games with Mrs. Brainard, art projects with Mrs. Roberts, and a lot of other fun opportunities, along with some popsicle treats at the end. We just want to give a big thank, thank you to our parent and guardian volunteers that came out to assist in those stations and different activities. Would also like to really give a big shout-out to our specialist teachers in general, they did an awesome job. We kind of changed it up this year, we went from field day to spree day, kids loved it, and it went really well. These past few weeks, students have also had some other activities that they've been getting involved in. We had our fourth graders taking a field trip to see the Worcester Bravehearts. We had a visit from our first-grade classrooms by our representative from the town library. We had our wonderful PTA end-of-the-year event. I don't think Jacqueline Leirner was here today, but we want to thank our PTA for all their support. We had our fifth-grade celebration today. We also yesterday had, or was that today? I think it was yesterday, kindergarten family presentation, we had preschool parades, we also had a pass sensory day that was led by some of our special education teachers, along with our speech-language pathologists, occupational therapists, and our BCBAs. They put on this sensory day for some of our substantially separate students that couldn't, that don't get a chance to participate in spree day. It was amazing, they had a great time, they had a big bubble machine, kids were laughing and smiling and had a great time. So that was really, just want to give a shout-out to those teachers that put that on. Lastly, tomorrow, we have our final community meeting, which we will celebrate some student accomplishments, we'll hand out some acceptance certificates, we will honor again Crystal Latan and Mr. Riggles, I think for the fourth time now. On Friday, we will have our fifth-grade students do a final walk-through of the school, and our K through four students will participate in our move-up day, which they'll get a chance to meet the three teachers or teachers for their next grade level. Finally, I just want to extend our appreciation to all the Major Edwards teachers, families, students, just another amazing and successful school year. Additionally, on behalf of Mrs. Zenzelmo, who I think has left, we would like to thank Mr. Maher, Mr. Fornier, Ms. Traynor, and also our school committee members, just for all your support throughout the year, we really appreciate it. We just hope everybody has a good couple last days and an awesome summer. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions, Ms. Toddette? Sherry?
I usually have nothing to say, but I feel like I have to say something. And I know he doesn't like to be the center of attention, but Mr. Maher, it's been twelve years of ups and downs, this and that's, he'll know that, and all I want to say is peace out, your life will be a little quieter now.
Thank you, Sherry. Kristy?
So first of all, I'd like to recognize Rick and Ed Riggles for their commitment and service to the school community, and they've made a lasting impact, and thanks for everything that they've done in helping me navigate in my transition in the past couple of years, and their patience with me of the facilities maintenance questions that I've asked him with, and also Rich, wishing him the best in his retirement and in the next chapter and enjoying a restful, fulfilling retirement within that. And the central office staff and school secretaries, working at this busy time of year, closing out the school year, and their dedication to that. And then in close, is your packet is the expense report as of May thirty-first, if anyone has any questions.
Any questions, Kristy? All right. I think with that, we'll move on to what could be the last...
Last one, one hundred and sixty-fifth report. Yes, over fifteen years. I'd like to thank Kelly McSweeney and Kristin Nussody for again facilitating the new teacher induction program on August twentieth and twenty-first. This year's focus will be on teaching the whole child and reflections in practice. In your packet is also a beginning list of school building committee compiling members. This is an ongoing process. We've had meetings last week with the Mass School Building Authority, kickoff meeting for that first round of modules, which is again highlighting and walking us through the process. Incoming Superintendent Riley and I yesterday had a follow-up Zoom with the Mespa folks on Chapter Seventy-four, and exploring that, which was a lengthy meeting, and we've got a lot of work to do, we have to make some contacts with Desi. I know Dr. Riley contacted the department earlier today, we'll have an upcoming meeting with them. I know there is some desire for additional information at this time. We were cautioned yesterday that some of the, we're not ready yet, this is not the time for us to be doing presentations. That time will be coming, but it's not now. I would also like to thank Mr. Mokankwitz for getting the school building project website up and started to get going. Information that we have at hand is beginning to be compiled, and that will be, is that live now, or...
Live now with minimal data.
Minimal data, yes. So that will be coming up shortly. I'd like to thank the administrative team for their collegiality through the years. We don't see eye-to-eye at times, but we're always respectful with one another, and we can continue to make progress, or have may continue to make progress. The central office staff, despite the level of insanity that we drive each other to each day, we still care about each other enough to be last men standing, as once again on Shoesbury Street, where we're out at midnight and there's no one else around except the West Boyleson Central Office people. So thank you for that, and for the committee, for your support. We've had our disagreements from time to time, but the endgame is always to support the district and the students here. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Rich. Did we also, or do you want to do it on the school building committee update piece of the agenda, or do you want to talk about the feasibility study portion?
We can do it at that point.
At that point, sure. All right, well with that then, we're going to pass over the cafeteria employee contract approval because it is not ready yet. So I believe a motion is in order to approve the West Boyleson Secretarial Personnel Contract for twenty twenty-five to twenty twenty-eight. If I can get a motion?
Make a motion to approve the West Boyleson Secretarial Personnel Contract for twenty twenty-five through twenty twenty-eight.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Next, we have a motion to approve the custodial personnel contract for twenty twenty-five to twenty twenty-eight. Can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the custodial personnel contract for twenty twenty-five to twenty twenty-eight.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Next, a vote to approve the August twenty twenty-five school committee retreat date. I think we agreed on August nineteenth, correct? All right, can I get a motion for the retreat date, please?
Make a motion for August nineteenth, twenty twenty-five, to be the date of the West Boyleson School Committee Retreat.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Now we have to appoint someone to the townwide planning committee that was asked of the town administrator. The person who was on it has also retired. They are planning on, they want to have a meeting this month, so instead of waiting until the retreat, they asked for us to do it now. Is anybody interested?
What does that entail?
Well, I don't know, they haven't met in about seven years now, so I have a feeling that it's about making, yeah, a long-term plan for the town. Want to make a motion to Nancy?
I make a motion to appoint Nancy Hubbard to nominate Nancy Hubbard to the townwide planning committee.
Can I get a second?
I second the motion.
Any discussion? I would have had a motion in the last one, but you took it, so. Do you accept the position? I think you're going to love it. Two months. All right. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, now we have a school building committee update. So this is in reference to the, and what's the name of this period again? Enrollment period? No.
Eligibility.
Eligibility period of the new school building project. So this is a, this is a due date of August first, so if we don't, well, we don't have it as a vote for tonight, so we're gonna ultimately end up having to meet again, hopefully via Zoom in July. I think Rich laid out in his packet some initial thoughts. There is two particular, most of the positions are pretty self-explanatory and specific people and/or should be appointed by another particular committee, except for two. There's one that is looking for a person that has engineering and building and/or architecture-type experience.
A member of the...
A member of the community. And then there's also another. So what I would like to see happen in...
She's looking for...
Oh, okay. What I was going to say, and then the other piece is, we have to select out of all of these positions, which ones are voting positions. So we didn't really get much...
There's no minimum or maximum to the voting members.
Right, and we didn't really get much guidance, it's basically left up to us. So for the architecture or that particular person, I think it would be best to ask the town administrator to maybe send something out looking for that, for applicants for that, because that's a broader communication that she has. And then if the committee is in agreement for the other, potentially a parent of the community. So with that, we might ask that Mr. Maher sends something out using the school brain's messaging system.
So can I request, like, is there any guidance on best practices related to this? We have, you know, local communities that have successfully done this in the past, what's been the composition of their boards, and how could we use that information to inform this? Because my understanding is that this is a board that we're going to establish the structure of, so we're going to establish the membership in terms of positions, even though the individuals on that might change over time. And then what Jim pointed to is the voting, who votes and who doesn't, and that once we establish the structure of this committee, that will stick with us throughout the project. Is that correct?
I think the voting piece will stick, but the people can change, as, you know, some of the people...
The designation, so say if there's two school committee members, there's two schools, they could change.
Right.
Yes, but the structure of it, can we get a draft, like a proposed draft prior to the July meeting, so that we can like respond to a draft?
I think you, well, you have it...
But there's ambiguities in here, like how are we, like, I don't have details written out about how we're going to elect and appoint the, like, the member of the community with the architecture experience, and we haven't come to a conclusion, or recommendations, or understand who the other members of the public potentially could be.
So I guess that's why I want to look for interested parties, and then we could select that at our meeting in July. As I mean, I don't, we don't know...
Are we going to vote on the composition of the committee in July, because it's due August one, correct?
Right. So interestingly enough, I asked at our meeting if we had to vote on this, and the answer is no. I think we should, but we're not required to. So I don't know, I'm open to suggestions. I think, I think we need to, I think those two positions specifically, we need a list of candidates who are interested and qualified.
And how we're going to collect those, and then how we're going to review them and appoint them, I also would like to...
So that's why I think we need to send out communications and get people to apply.
Yes, I think I'm concerned that we don't have a process for that laid out right now, and I would like to see that process and understand what that process is going to be prior to saying that that's something that we shouldn't follow with.
I think we should use the same process we use for other committees, where we've gone on like the same thing with the superintendent search committee and other things, I mean, I think it's pretty well established.
Right, are people going to come and speak in public, and then we're going to vote on those people openly? Or are we gonna, is someone gonna, you know, the, like, who's going to appoint that person once they've applied to the position?
I guess it's up to us to decide how we want to do it, so I'll, again, open to suggestions.
Okay.
I mean, more specifically, I think we need to get the candidates for those, and we need to, I think on our own, figure out who, it's important to us for which positions to be voting members. Those, I think, are the two biggest pieces, as far as what we need to be, I guess, prepared for, for our next time we meet. I think that if we have multiple candidates, then, you know, I think we use the town's application for volunteer form last time, because it was something that's already been used, and in part of that lists, gives the person the opportunity to list their experiences and qualifications. So I guess I would like to leverage that same thing again for both sets of applicants, and we would review them and pick who we feel is the best suitable for the project.
And I agree with the collection of the information and the recruitment of folks, I just want to make sure that we're rock-solid on the process once those are received, and how we're proceeding with them from that point forward, because that's where I think, and I, it's, we were figuring it out as we were going along, but I want us to take a pause and make sure that we do this thoughtfully, is that that's where things broke down a little bit, around some of the communication to applicants and other folks about what that process was. And I honestly did not have transparency on that either, which I take responsibility for. So I just would like us to, like, be very clear, once the applicants are taken, what's the selection process? That's all.
Any ideas? I mean, depends on how many we get, I guess. I mean, last time, I think we all reviewed the applicants for superintendent, and we did votes for each person. I don't really, I mean, if there's, you know, seven people that show up, I don't really know of another way.
I just think that communication back to the candidates needs to be clear and consistent back to everyone, and in order to do that, we need to be clear and consistent. So if they're going to be asked to speak in public, I think they need to know that that's an expectation.
Well, I get what you're saying, okay.
Yeah.
Ideally, it'll be a Zoom meeting.
No, right, well, it's still public, but yeah, yeah.
Same, same, same thing.
Sorry, is my OCD kicking in? If we could lay it out, I don't think it's tremendous... Sorry, is my OCD kicking in? If we could lay it out, I don't think it's tremendous. Yeah.
Very, very quick research. Two communities, their committees consisted of 15 members and 20 members. It's pretty extensive.
Were the, like, people, the membership enlisted their titles?
Yes.
Yeah. So we could look at that?
Yeah. Yep.
That, thank you, Jason.
How many voting positions does it say?
In this particular community, it did not say, but the other one it did. And there were maybe about half were voting members.
Okay.
Yeah, I think with a little research, we can come to identify what the best practices and what other folks are doing. I just want us to be crystal clear on each phase of the process.
Yeah, I mean, I guess I think it's an interview process if we have a significant number of candidates or even multiple. I don't, I don't know another way to do it other than an interview process.
Yeah, it just needs to be outlined. That's all I'm requesting. I'm not disagreeing with that. It just needs to be clear for all of us.
All right. Any other questions on that? So we'll, we need to work on getting candidates for that. And we'll schedule something for maybe mid-July. Well, maybe even, well, second week of July, maybe. Well, I wanted, I know, but I wanted to do it earlier than later in case we don't get to come to a conclusion. And I'm thinking right now, today's the 11th. If we do the second week, it gives us almost four weeks, three to four weeks to get candidates who might be interested in serving. And then if we do it in that second week of July, then if we needed to have another meeting, additional meetings, and also for other people's availability based on vacations and things like that for the applicants, it gives us a little bit more leeway to, instead of putting everything towards the end of the month.
Do we want to clarify and discuss what we feel like that other position is?
I think it should be a parent of the district. I don't know if we want to.
More than one?
Do we want more than one? I mean, I guess.
I don't know. Jason, what do they got? It's all over the board.
Just say associate, town member, volunteer.
Yeah. Right, which makes sense. Yeah. Fincom. Yeah. Yeah.
Which of those I think should be appointed by those boards?
Townwide planning board.
We'll put that on there. I mean, it's actually, it is something that's townwide planning. It's a building for the town. I guess we do have that leverage, don't we? It's all over the place.
It is, yeah.
Rich, could you also, I'm unclear what, what we're voting on.
Yeah, that's what, that was my other question.
What the voting members are voting on. If we could try to get some information, unless you have that already. Yeah, I'd like to know what a voting member is gonna be responsible for voting for.
Yes. And how often does it need to be convened or what's the recommendation?
All right. Any other questions for this so that we can, are able to move forward next month?
The website is live?
Just.
Just. I know it's, yes. Okay.
Currently, right now, in the process of working with Rich on gathering content to find a flow that works for the various pages.
Yep.
And about page, a community response page, or community outreach page, as we call it, because it's called that on other sites. Just a meeting updates, links to various documents, where we stand and what module, you know, basically every step that we're going through in all the different meetings and all the different outcomes and minutes and agendas and everything that we want to make.
As it comes in.
Yeah, as it comes in, it's gonna get posted, so the community is aware of exactly everything that's going on.
Yeah. Thank you, Eric.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right. So I think we need to take action on moving forward as soon as possible to get candidates for these two positions. And then the last update that has to do with the school, I think it's very important to understand is our eligibility period ends February 27th and the feasibility period begins shortly after. We need money for a feasibility study. And based on the time that that money has to be available by, we would need to go to Ask Town Meeting in October for a sum of money that is not determined yet. And I think it's best that we publicize that sooner than later because we're gonna run on a tight timeline. And depending on how the money's to be allocated, it could also require a special election. All right. Any other questions or comments on this? If not, we'll go to the members. Nancy, you have anything you want to add? And your mic's off. You know, anything. We're done. Now it's.
Did you say be quick?
Uh, no. No.
Oh, sorry. I heard you wrong. Okay. I just want to say farewell, Rich. It's been great working with you and really easy. And I appreciate how responsive you've been pretty immediately whenever needed. So we'll miss working with you. And thank you to all the leadership and administration. It's been a great year overall. And I'm gonna miss you, Alex. Nora's going to middle school, so I won't see you all the time. But just want to say thank you for a great year.
Thank you, Nancy. Jason?
I definitely echo those remarks. So congratulations on another successful year. And I want to thank Mr. Fornier and Mrs. Smith for a wonderful graduation ceremony last Friday. It was phenomenal. And Rich, you know, being in my position, I've worked under a handful of superintendents and none of stuck out like you. And so I want to, I want to thank you for your guidance, your mentorship, your friendship, your candor. And man, I'm jealous. Congratulations.
Yeah, great job. Tracy, would you like to say anything?
So as a new parent in the district, my daughter just finished or is finishing kindergarten. It's been a fantastic year. She absolutely loves Major Edwards. She loves all of her teachers and the staff there. Mrs. Laton is fantastic. I'm sad that she's retiring after our first year. But, you know, I'm looking forward to many more years to come here. And congratulations, Rich.
Emily?
I echo all of that. Thank you to all the leadership for everything that you've done this year. Special thanks to the Major Edwards staff and the special ed team. We've had amazing kindergarten year and amazing second grade year, and that's down to all of your hard work. And it's just, I've said it before, it makes our family life better and stronger because of everything that you do. And we appreciate it. Rich, congratulations. I promise to keep bothering you about the building committee and that work for as long as I'm able. And I'm sure we will enjoy sparring in the near future. But in all sincerity, congratulations and enjoy your retirement. It's well-earned.
Excellent. See, I had to follow him at graduation. I had to follow that, the school committee meeting. I think I pretty much summed up everything during the, you know, retiree recognition. But I will say that, you know, it has been a great pleasure for all of these years. Been my kid's principal, their superintendent. We've done a lot of great things together. And we're gonna still be working together for the building project. So, you know, it's not goodbye quite yet, but you should enjoy at least for a little bit. Thanks. All right. If nobody has anything else, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. I'm sorry, what'd you ask? Not at this time. It's not an agenda item. I don't, we can't answer anything. We can discuss that offline. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Can I get a second? You gotta be faster with that mute button. All those in favor?
Aye.